All right, I call to order a work session for, uh, holy cow, what is this, September the?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth at ten AM. Can we get a roll call, Mr. President?
Counselperson Tony Abbott.
Here.
Counselperson Don Little.
Present.
Uh, Counselperson Tommy Roulette.
Present.
Counselperson Lenny Fryman.
Here.
Counselperson Brett Launner.
Yes, sir.
City Attorney Dale Welton.
Here.
Mayor Kelly Malone.
Here.
And myself.
Okay, uh, the reason for today's meeting is to discuss, uh, budget. You guys have had your budget books for a little while. I'm hoping you've had a chance to gaze through it. I'm sure you probably have gone to Mark and asked some questions already. But, uh, obviously, we want to answer any questions you may have as we put this together.
Um, if I could just take a couple of minutes.
Yeah.
If you take a look at page twenty-seven. Kind of go over a few things on this page right here, just kind of points some main things out. If you take a look at page twenty-seven, it summarizes all of our funds that we budget each year. Um, and of course, you'll see some different columns there. Uh, it kind of shows you, uh, the twenty-six, uh, it tells you the revenues that we have, our projected revenues, uh, and of course, what we budget out of each one of those. And then, of course, the second and last column, if you take a look at that, it tells you, you know, whether we got a surplus or a deficit in each one of those funds. As you notice, our general fund is, um, that's probably one of our better funds that's been doing very well over the last probably six years. It's been doing very well. Uh, you could take a look at the ending balance that we project, that we should have in the very last column right there. But you'll notice that this year, we are projecting a surplus of one point, almost one point three million. That is after Senate Bill One, uh, basically cut another six hundred thousand dollars out of that, and that's basically where it cuts from. So, you'll notice that our general fund is doing very well. I end up having to move several things out of some of these other funds and put them into general fund, and I also had to move them, some of the things into MDF, just because some of these funds, I just wanted to make sure that the revenues that we got coming in these funds, it kind of balances out. And you notice that we do a pretty good job on most of them. Uh, Riverboat, I didn't know if you had a chance to look at the individual section with the Riverboat, but that's one of the funds that, uh, and that's the revenue sharing, uh, whether it's the monthly or quarterly that we get into there. Uh, what we budget out of there in the past, I had to take several things out of there because we have some different line items in there that were pretty much taking most of that fund, or most of that revenue. So, uh, it does show a slight deficit. We hopefully, that, uh, revenue money will be a little bit better in the future. We'll see what happens, but, uh, those are just the projections right there.
Could you fill us in on what you moved out of there?
Uh, if you take, well, really, I, you want me to just tell you what I kept?
We didn't, we didn't.
The only thing I kept, the only thing that we're basically paying out of is, are we paying our utility bills out of it? And our insurance, whether it's health insurance, workers' comp, uh, vehicle liability stuff. That's all that's left in there. So, that's pretty much taken care of all, everything else I moved out, um, which, which most cities, you know, if they have a riverboat fund, they only fund certain things out of it. Um, we were fortunate enough with our riverboat fund over the years to be able to fund a lot of things out of it, that we still have the MDF fund, which is, which is doing okay. And, and one of the main reasons the MDF fund is doing really, really good is because of the interest that we've been earning on our money. So, I mean, you're talking probably one point five, around one point five million of the interest earned on MDF, which is one reason we're able to spend a little bit more money out of that each year. So, um, does that kind of answer your question, Dylan?
Yeah.
Can I, can I back up to the general fund? I wanted to make you guys aware when, uh, and for whatever reasons, uh, prior to when we came on board ten years ago, um, half of our police officers were being funded out of the Riverboat. Uh, and we, we, the, the goal was to make sure that all personnel was funded out of general fund. I, I'm happy to say, I mean, currently, uh, all of our personnel is in general fund, and which is a great accomplishment. But, and then to show that we got a surplus, uh, in the general fund, and, and a lot of it is attributed to you guys, uh, allowing everybody, allowing us to take the max levy, which we were leaving a lot of money on the table every year. So, I appreciate you guys doing that because that, that's, that's a, that's a game, that was a game changer. It really was. And, uh, you guys need to be commended for that.
Yeah, if, it, just to add a little bit to that right there, I mean, he's not a hundred percent correct as far as all the personnel out of the general fund. If you take a look at the very first column on that last page. If you take a look at that very first column, it tells you exactly what funds we fund any personnel out of. Because it says, uh, Personnel Services, so we basically fund the majority, and you can see the majority of personnel is funded out of the general fund. And of course, you take a look down there, you see Parks and Recreation, which is, wants to get some of the tax-based money going into that, and that's where we fund some personnel. Uh, PS Lit, same thing. Um, we do some personnel out of there. Um.
PS Lit.
Yeah, MDF is usually zero, but right now, the only personnel that we have out of MDF right now is the SROs. I put them in there because that's where we were basically paying the, uh, giving the school the money for the SROs. So, I decided to go ahead and put them in there for right now, uh, to kind of see how things go as far as, you know, and of course, the future's going to tell on us as far as what kind of revenue and stuff we get for that. Um, and then, of course, in redevelopment, we have a couple of personnel out of that, and EMS, the county. You'll notice that the number on that right there, that's all personnel. EMS Lit, the state gives, uh, the county so much money, I think it's like, I think it's like four million or something like that, isn't it? But then they divvied up the people that provide the EMS service in the, in the county, and that's pretty much our share. And our share right there with our contract, we have to spend it on personnel. So, that's, that's the number that, uh, it's pretty much what it is. I think it's a couple of dollars short because anything short, uh, anything you don't spend, you pretty much mostly give back at the end of the year, so I made sure that we, uh, budgeted pretty much every penny of it. So, uh, just one more thing on this page. You'll notice that some of these other funds that are in red, um, the NR, firefighting equipment, uh, that right there has quite a bit of a deficit issue because of the new fire engine that we're going to pay for this year. It should be coming in maybe towards the beginning of the year.
First of the year.
First of the year, we have to pay for it. Uh, keep in mind, those funds were set up where, um, you know, we haven't put any money into those funds in a long time, and that's might be something that we want to think about if we want to continue to have these funds, to basically be able to put some money into these funds.
Non-reverting?
Non-reverting, yeah. So, uh, you know, some of them are still in pretty good shape. We don't really have a lot of things that, you know, are taking too much revenue there, but the only revenue that they're getting right there is going to be interest. You know, just of the money that it had. Any other revenue, there's nothing unless we actually fund it. Uh, I do want to say something. I want to go back up to Rainy Day. Rainy Day, we spent quite a bit of money on that pavilion over there. That pretty much take, that took quite a bit of the money for Rainy Day. So, I did, um, out of MDF, I put, uh, five hundred fifty thousand dollars into Rainy Day from MDF, so I budgeted that. And you'll notice that in the MDF individual lines. So, but, uh, yeah, if you got any questions with this page or now the individual line items, if you guys want to go back, if you have any questions on any individual line items, I can, or the mayor can explain those.
Again, what I was saying, it sounds like what I heard from you yesterday. Uh, I want to go back to page seventeen on the Riverboat. I greatly appreciate that you did what you did, like moving stuff from that into the MDF in the general. But, uh, also to be aware, we still have five items in that fund, correct?
There, there are fi, I basically mentioned four, but the fifth one is the Riverboat sharing. Uh, we have to budget. There are certain entities that we have to basically budget, and I'm not sure. I, I've asked people in the state in different reasons, but they just said because there may be, you know, five oh one, three C, something else that are, that you actually have to budget for certain ones that we give Riverboat sharing to, and you have to actually budget that money. So, the rest of it's just a pass-through. You don't budget like the cities and towns that we give money to. We don't budget that money. So.
The other.
Certain ones that you have to.
They come in, was, I question mark on, we had the vet program and vet services, and I thought we lost one. What he actually did is in the MDF, he combined, combined the two. So, we did not lose it because I kept looking and looking.
Yeah, yeah, Tommy, he stopped by, talked to me yesterday, and I said, wait a minute, now let me make sure I.
Yeah, and I, yeah.
But it is added into the other, uh, line with the MDF.
That's what I was going to ask. So, I know on page seventeen as well with, it says like Riverfront and Other Services, Advanced Towsey House, um, some of those things, it looks like there's no longer funding for.
They are all in the MDF.
Okay, so it's all been moved.
So, if you look to MDF, you'll see them added in there.
If you go, if you go the line by, out of my line item, you go to the MDF, you can see where Mark put them there because I marked right next to them where they were at. And some of them I was confused with, and again, thank you, Mark, for helping me yesterday. I did spend quite a lot of time with you yesterday. Those things that I thought were completely removed, he showed me that they were in the general, so I, who had understood it? Because I'm like, wow, we are cutting a lot.
Uh, I, I will add that, uh, we're currently working with sites, um, looking at all of our, uh, property and liability insurance because, uh, we, we had a, we had a list of our, our assets, and, uh, we were, we were insuring some things that really nobody could understand why we would insure them. Uh, and I'm going to say something like the, uh, like the, at the beginning of Walnut Street here, the, uh, um, what do you call it? The arch there.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
We were insuring that. Uh, I mean, and it was costing quite a bit of, of, of a premium. Uh, but that was one of maybe forty or fifty items. Uh, so.
How would you not insure that? And what if it falls in the court or something?
No, that, we got, we got, that, that's not, that's not what that for insurance was for.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Just replace it.
I misunderstood here.
Yeah.
Okay.
We, we, we went back and, because we went back and we, we, sites was in the meetings with us because we wanted to make sure we weren't doing anything that was going to be detrimental to us, of course. Uh, but, so some of these numbers may go down.
We kept the liability on everything.
Yes, yes. And then also, uh, uh, we're currently, Jenny and I and, and others were working with, uh, we're looking at, uh, uh, just hypothetically, we, we know that we're bound to providing, uh, as good as or better insurance to our bargaining group, uh, but we are looking at other options.
That's what I was about to ask. I saw that there is a nine hundred thousand dollar increase in that line item. So, I was curious if we were shopping it, if there's a way to self-insure or?
Well, we already are self-insured.
Wow.
And, uh, this is all, this is just catastrophe stuff and, and stop loss. Um, it, it's, uh, it's astronomical. And I, I, I'm going to share it, uh, because I think it needs to be shared. Uh, we, we met with Med Bend the other day, and the union is involved in those meetings, and we want them to hear exactly what we hear. We didn't know this. Nobody did. But, uh, you know, the weight loss, um.
Ozempic?
Well, not as much Ozempic. Ozempic is, uh, they had, the people that are on Ozempic have to jump through hoops because it's only used for people with diabetes.
So, Zepbound.
But Zepbound and, and another one.
Wegovy.
Wegovy. Uh, we have, we have seven hundred, a projec, projected seven hundred and thirty or seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of expense this year.
Wow.
So, I, I went crazy during that meeting, and, uh, so the union seen me, but, uh, I told them, I says, okay, we, you guys need to go to the bargaining unit, and we need to get this stopped. Because this is, it's going to approach a million dollars of money that we're, we can't do it. We can't do it. And, uh, there's sixty-two people currently taking this, uh, thirty employees and maybe half of it's their spouses or whatever. So, obviously, uh, there is going to be, uh, the, the, the union's going to have to vote on it. But, uh, I, I, I told them, and, and I know we're in a public meeting, and it's nothing I didn't share with them. But, you know, if, if we can't, if we can't get this stopped, it's going to affect other things, capital, things like that. Because you just can't, you just can't, we just can't throw another million dollars at insurance. It just can't happen. So, I'm hoping that they'll, they'll be understanding and they'll do the right thing, and I have all the faith that they will. Um, so anyway, but I wanted to make sure you guys were aware.
I mean, if, if you take a li, look at MDF, that's where we, you know, give a lot of money to the nonprofits, you know? And, and we're very, very fortunate. We're probably one of the very few cities, cities that basically give that much money to the nonprofits, and it's, it's well over a million dollars, and right now, financially, we can't, you know, with budgeting numbers and, uh, each one of those funds, we can do that right now, but, uh, and hopefully, we can continue to do things. Just like the mayor said on certain line items, if they get to the point, then I, you know, I've got to move other things. And if I move things, then that we definitely have to pay for, then some things need to be cut. But, uh, right now, we're in good shape. I, I feel good about this budget. Um, I do want to, I do, I do want to add one thing. Just, you know, this is kind of a little bit different, but I want to make sure I don't forget this. If you look at page sev, page eighteenth, I can't hardly see anymore.
I got that.
I refuse to put those readers down. I refuse to wear them because then I won't be able to see anything.
I was going to bring that up, so, how about?
But anyway, the Fire Paper Run line is in the middle of the page, um, under, uh, Public Safety Lit.
Eleven twenty-nine.
Eleven twenty-nine, yes, thank you, Tommy. But anyway, um, I don't know if the mayor's mentioned it or not, but we're having a hard time with our, um, paper run, our, our part-time fire, and it's getting to the point where we can't get the people because they're making, they're able to go other places and make twenty-two dollars an hour or twenty-three dollars an hour, so we're having a hard time filling those things. And, and, and by not being able to pay them a certain amount of money, then basically, we don't get the part-time to sign up for positions. And then when they don't sign up for the positions, that means full-time people basically sign up for them, and you guys know what we pay our full-time employees. So, it's one of those things where, and I don't know if I'm explaining this right.
No, you're right, you're right. Keep going.
Uh, but it's one of those things where if we rose it, raise it up to twenty dollars per hour, I'd need to increase that line to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, that would be an extra thirty thousand dollars. And if you look at the last page, you'll, you'll see that we're still, you know, we'd still be about twelve, fourteen thousand dollars to the good in that, uh, fund. So, I, I do want to, I am going to switch that.
So, you're asking us?
Guys got concerns with giving them twenty dollars an hour.
Are you asking us if you want to, we want to do that, or?
Well, yeah, if you guys got concerns.
I, I have no problem with that. I, I know where you're coming from. I see the overtime in, uh, first responders, and I know where you come from.
Okay.
I watch them just as well as you guys do. So, I really don't have a problem with that, and you are right. When you're only paying eighteen dollars an hour and these guys.
Well, it's sixteen right now.
Sixteen, I'm sorry. They, because you were going to raise it to eighteen, you're thinking twenty under.
Yes.
That, that they, they do. They're go, they're going to other places and work.
You can't blame them.
No, you can't. Can't, can't.
Yeah, because they're not, they're not getting any benefits. They're just, they're just getting their hourly rate.
But what I want to say too, going back to what you're saying, uh, there, there is going to be a time where somebody's nonprofit, we're going to have to real, really look hard, because you know as well as I do, our numbers are not what they used to be over the years.
No.
And people are just going to have to understand that. Lawrenceburg cannot continually be the free city in Run By Way. I mean, I'm sorry to say it that way, but that's what it is.
You know, I, every time that we, we have to make a, a, a cut on a nonprofit as far as a percentage, uh, I, I, I talk to them.
Right.
And, and they're understanding. They understand.
Show them the numbers.
Yeah, they, they understand, and they're, they're appreciative of what we are able to do. Uh, but, you know, uh, yeah, I, I mean, Mark, Mark knows it best, but, uh, as long as we can still afford it, we can afford it. But, but there's going to be time, a time when maybe we can. And so, we're just, you know, laying groundwork, I guess.
Okay, can I bring up, can I talk?
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, I'm. Clarification, so you're all aware. Me and Mark talked about the SROs, how he's got them in the MDF now on page twenty-two under.
One, 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 one.
Um, and what he showed me is he took a hundred thousand dollars from the school, if I was aware of that, right? And then the two hundred thousand that we put in. But now, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, after next year, we will not have that line item for the school SROs in there, correct?
Well, it's, if you notice the line item this year, it's zero. If you, if you take a look at the very next page and it's fourteen, sixteen, you'll see that that is zero. So, last year, we put two hundred thousand dollars in, and we gave to the school. Well, this year, in the budget, it's zero. There's, there's nothing budgeted out of it. And if you take a look at the line directly above that.
Right.
You'll see where the schools, we usually give them two hundred and sixty. Fifteen of that goes to St. Lawrence, so they get a hundred and forty-five. Uh, they usually get two forty-five, but I cut them back to one forty-five next year. And then St. Lawrence will get fifteen of the one sixty.
So, from this point on, it's the point I'm trying to make is we're going to have the one, 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 one in MDF for.
Yeah, is, it, for right now, I'm, I'm going to put it in the MDF and.
Because that's one thing we had a concern with, where are we going to put said money? Now, that being said, when we get the other monies from the, the school in Greendale, where, will you put that in with that?
I will put that into MDF. I will, I will.
Okay.
Yeah, yes.
Uh, I don't know if I took the chance to tell you either. Uh, I met with the new principal of St. Lawrence, and he is going to apply for the school safety grant as well. Now, he, he missed this, this round, but it will be for twenty twenty-six. He's all in favor of it, actually.
Okay. Page twenty-three, it's a new item, fourteen eighty-seven, that's one four eight seven.
Yes.
Ivy Tech Nursing.
Yes.
Do you explain that to me?
Yeah, uh, Mark Graver came and, and talked to me, uh, there, uh, wanting to upgrade their, their nursing down here at the Riverfront, uh, campus, and, uh, he asked if we would contribute. Uh, and I told him, I says, well, we could do it on a year-to-year, uh, you know, for, you know, two or three years, whatever, if, if council has an appetite for it. Uh, they're getting more and more, um, I guess, nursing folks. And, uh, their, their lab has not been, uh, updated in, in years. Uh, they're obviously putting a lot more money than what we are into it, but, uh, he wanted to know if we would, uh, be a contributor, sort of like we did with advanced manufacturing, things like that. Not to that extent. I think that was like a three million dollar. But, uh, so I, I, I had told him that I'd put a hundred thousand dollars in there for this year, but it would be year-to-year based upon, you know, what we can, you know, what you guys have an appetite for.
And for clarification, does not Ivy Tech have nursing scholarships or something that is affiliated with our school? Where kids can actually take nursing classes over there?
Yes, they do, and that's not a part of this.
Right, right, that's, it's, that's totally.
That's different, yeah.
You're, we're giving this money because they have so many people or whatnot. They need to update their lab.
Absolutely.
Got it, got it.
Yeah.
And that others.
Good question.
That's, this is petty, but tell your people up there, Reedy, that they need to learn how to spell lieutenant. They did it wrong again this year.
Where's that at?
Lieutenant. On page six, they spelled it wrong again this year.
We're all over the place. I got it. Page six, that's on twenty-three.
I'm sorry, that's just the way I roll. All right, my last but not least, and don't take offense to it, please. Page one, four, one, 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 that's four, forty-one eleven. Page eight, eleven eleven, and page nine, forty-one eleven again. There are four percent increases. I, I'm just saying I'm not in favor of it. That's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying.
You say what now?
I'm not in favor.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying. Don't take offense, it's just my thought. That's, I'm just one person.
Okay.
Okay. Wait a minute, let's see if I got any more questions.
Sure you do.
I got a lot of answers yesterday. I spent a good hour and a half, two hours of work yesterday, and I got educated. And I greatly appreciate that, I really do.
I appreciate you coming in.
No, I went over that because I had a big concern at the beginning, didn't I?
I get a little math lesson there.
Don't, don't. What did I tell you about that math?
I know, I know.
What's that CBA say on that day? We ain't going to get back in that.
Uh, I got some personnel things I want to bring up if, but I want to get all your questions answered first, so you got other questions?
The last thing that I have is on a couple of these different ones and plan commission and so forth and so on, there is a decrease in the union pension. What does that attribute?
Well, good question. You'll no, you'll notice that all those will be, because last year, we had, and it's basically a hundred twenty-four dollars per person, you know, depending on how many people per, per week, times how many weeks, you know? But last year, uh, there was fifty-three weeks in the year that we had to pay. This year, there's only going to be fifty-two. So, basically, you'll notice that it'll be, whatever that number is, uh, times fifty-two instead of fifty-three. So, it's going to be, it's going to be a little bit less for each one, depending on how many employees are in each one of those lines.
Yep.
But, yeah, it's because, and then Tommy was asking yesterday as far as the percents, he said, man, he said, these guys just wants to get a four percent raise next year. He goes, he goes, you got this all messed up. I said, well.
I didn't say it like that.
Well.
It was sort of like that. I was in the room.
How did you say it?
All three of you were. I'm like, whoa, wait a minute, pump the brakes here.
No, but it's based on, see, last year, they, you know, they got to raise, but the thing is, they, everybody got an extra check because when we do the salary warrants, like I was talking to Jenny, you know, in the salary warrants, there's only three employees, basically, myself, the mayor, and the judge, that are basically paid yearly. Everybody else is paid either by the week or by the hour. So, when you have fifty-three pays in a year, you got to take that amount times fifty-three or the hourly times forty times fifty-three instead of fifty-two. So, last year, they made a little bit more money. So, this year, the, you know, it's not quite, it doesn't quite look as much of a raise, even though they did get their four percent raise in these numbers.
And I, talking to Mark yesterday, I went back to last year's as well, and I did the percentages, and I seen exactly before, I met with him, what he was saying, because I'm like, well, that was higher last year than it should have been, but it worked out soon. And he's the math man, not me.
My last question, um, I saw that procurement officer, are we going away with that position? Okay.
Yeah, I think, uh, strike two was enough, uh, for me. I, um, I, I still believe that the right person could really save us a lot of money, but you just got to find the right people. And so, I, I think right now, it's just better to not.
Go away with it?
Not do anything with it. That was the intent.
I greatly appreciate all you guys' work on that too. That's, uh, that's pretty good. I think we've come a long way since I might, the start of my first term here with Mayor Malone.
Well, I just, I want to say Jillian over there.
Oh, yeah.
Her treasure office, she was, she was awesome this year. I mean, I really.
She really came.
You know, la, last year, she was kind of brand new, and I didn't really have her involved too much. And this year, I just kind of really got her involved and kind of showed her everything, and she's, she's doing awesome over there. I can't say enough good things about her, and of course, the mayor, and of course, all the, uh, department heads, they, they were awesome together in getting these numbers and so.
They, that's what, I want to give them some kudos.
Yes, yes.
Department heads really have, uh, yeah, my whole, uh, I don't know, opinion of, of how they handle the budget is, is done, I mean, it just changed completely. They really have taken ownership, and, uh, and I appreciate that. They, I think they understand, you know, wants needs and things like that. And they're very, they're very quick to point that out now. But, you know, I, I appreciate them taking the time to do what they did with the budget as well.
And to add to that, Mayor, no offense, I know they run into buzzsaw with you.
What's that?
They run into buzzsaw with you.
Oh, wow.
Um, that's all good.
Yeah.
It's all good.
My last.
All good though.
My, my last question, I believe, uh, under parks, uh, we have stuff in there for perks, park upgrades. It looks like we've budgeted a hundred thousand. Do you think that'll be enough for the conversations that we've had with Austin?
Oh, there, there's stuff.
Upgrades.
But there's stuff in, uh, in capital too, that'll be part of that. Uh, but, yeah, yeah, we think it will be.
Sounds good.
Yeah, yeah, we think.
Well, they can always come to us for a different line item if they, that's what I thought. I, I was going to ask that same question, but talking with him and then looking at stuff, I'm like.
And we're trying to do, uh, like all the park upgrades, anything we can, we're doing it in-house.
Right, yeah, right.
Uh, I don't know if you guys have seen what Craig did over here.
I'm watching it.
At the utility director's office.
Yeah.
Did a great job of matching that.
Yeah, for taking out a door and putting up that, uh, putting a glass in there.
Yeah, did a really nice job. He's talented. Okay, um, I wanted, any other questions? I don't want to stop. Okay, I wanted, any other questions? I don't wanna stop questions at all, but, okay. I, I got some requests that I wanna run by you. We're gonna, and I asked Jenny to be here too, because it'll affect her. I wanna post an office manager position in the engineering department. Obviously, I, I would think Ashley would be the person to sign that.
I'm surprised she's not there now.
She, I think you guys, let's, even go, before Austin was hired, she really stepped up. But she's, she's really changed that department around. So I, I, I think that, you know, we can, we have an office manager position in Civil City already, so it's just a matter of, I'll get the Board of Works to approve posting a position. We won't post it until December, because it wouldn't be effective until the January first timeframe, because of the budget. But I wanted to just make you guys aware of that. If there's any concerns, and if you don't wanna talk about it now, you can talk to Jenny or myself at any time.
Would she still be in the union, or will that be a non-union position?
Absolutely, no, she stays in the union, and if you don't lose anything, she actually gains a little bit.
And if you noticed, in that department, in the general fund, I.
Yeah.
I put that in there as that.
In case it happens.
So basically, it's.
I scratched it out.
The numbers are budgeted for.
Twitter and the office.
That, hopefully it happens. If it doesn't happen, we can, it's in the same department, so I can move it around.
When I first seen, when I first seen it live, I'm like, what is he doing now? And I'm like, oh, that's like, I got, you gotta watch him, man.
Okay, Jenny, explain, you can probably explain this better than I can. Steve Goble and Liz.
Yeah, so, we'll start with Liz, because right now, she's hourly, but she's been working a lot of overtime, right, this year? Because of the coverage in the evening and things like that, so we'd like to move her to salary. However, the, the Department of Labor has a minimum salary requirement, so we would need to move her up to that amount. And the same thing with Steve and his position. He needs, he's already salary, but we need to be at that minimum salary requirement, which is a fifteen thousand, six fifty-six per boat loan. So that's what we're wanting to do with both of them for twenty twenty-six.
Understand why she's asking that. We had overtime down at the community center that we really weren't anticipating in the budget. Uh, so we thought the best way to maybe to handle that. It's a win for her, and, and we talked to Richard, and, I mean, Liz is doing a great job. Very, very capable young lady. But, and the same with Steve, we, we spoke with, with Bryson. We wanted to get their take on, on, you know, you don't wanna reward somebody if they're not holding their end of the, of the job up, but.
Yeah, I think, I think it was last year, I think the, the one down at the community center, we, we had to change it, because all of a sudden Jenny goes, whoa, she, here we go, we got a problem with this, because she's not making enough. It was, it was always set up as a salary position. And then Department of Labor, the new numbers, and they keep on changing every year. They go up, so we had a, so we said, all right, let's just move her back to hourly, so we moved her to hourly, you know, so we could be okay with the Department of Labor, but it just made sense, because she was, she was getting quite a bit of overtime and different situations down there, so it made sense to go that direction, so.
Any questions about those two? Okay, the, the next two I'm, I'm asking is, I'd like to give Joy an additional three percent raise, and as well as Morgan. And we would have to, obviously, do an MOU with the, the CBA, if this goes forward, until the, a new contract is developed, it would be in a, a MOU, or an addendum to the, the salary page in the, in the CBA. Justification, obviously, I think everybody understands the amount of hours that Joy puts in, that she does not get overtime. I mean, this, this weekend alone, she'll put in, I don't know, twenty hours. With Friday and Saturday, at least. And we did hire her in on the lower range when we hired, hired her in.
Six thousand plus.
Yes.
Yeah. Morgan, I, I, you know, and I, I wanna, I want you guys to discuss this stuff with me, but we've gotten, I think we've gotten, agree or disagree with some of the stuff that, that happened, but I think we've, we've proven that that position has, I don't know, I don't wanna say paid for itself, it's not paying for itself, but, but it's, it's creating a revenue stream, which, that's not the, we want people just to, we don't wanna have to find people, we don't wanna have to take people in, but there's a lot of, of, of work that's involved with that. And I'm gonna bring up the Fairhaven deal. He, he was, he took, he took the charge of that Fairhaven deal. I, and those are the kinds of things that he's been, been doing. And I just think he deserves a small bump. Question?
I have no problem with neither one of them.
I'm sorry?
I have no problem with neither one of them.
No, me neither.
Okay.
We see a lot of what they're doing, so, yeah.
Um, the last thing that Mark and I had talked about, you know, we got some contract employees that are not in the IAM pension. They're in, they got a four fifty-seven B, which we, this, took, Mark brought that on for him, what, three years ago, Mark?
It's been about two or three years.
And we've got five people that take advantage of it, or three out of five?
I think it's, right now, it's one, two, three, four, five, five people.
Five out of seven people that are eligible for it, take advantage of it. We would like to raise that, right now, we wanna match up to three percent. Raise that to six percent.
And what is this here?
That's pretty common in a lot of.
When you look at your accounts payable vouchers, it's in there, where they get that.
It's, it's called a four fifty-seven B, it's your retirement plan.
We brought, we brought that up in December.
Like a four one K.
When you set it up and you don't give it to everybody, you gotta call it a four fifty-seven B.
Yeah, oh, okay. December of twenty twenty-three is when you did, I think it was.
I think it was twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, so you're saying, take it from three to six percent?
Yes, give them the opportunity to, they, they would have.
There's five people.
They would have to put in six percent to get.
Okay.
If you equate what we, what we do in terms of the pension for the city workers, what is that?
You don't even wanna know.
A higher percentage?
You don't, you do not even.
Okay, I was just curious.
Yeah, it is, it's much higher.
It's, it's like.
That's why we thought, you know, even bumping it to six percent, I think is a, it's a good, good thing for those individuals.
Yeah, it's very much.
I'll stick at fifteen.
Yeah, it's, it's, it, yeah. I'd have to do the numbers, but it's, it's a, a lot more. And, you know, people, people see that. I mean, just the surcharge, and you noticed that I had to move the surcharge, I think I moved, I think it was in rainy day, I had to move it over to MDF. It's, it's went from pretty much like a hundred thousand dollars to two hundred thousand dollars, it's up to five hundred thousand dollars now. And I know that probably within about, probably three years, I'm looking at the percents and stuff like that, it's probably gonna be a million dollars, just the surcharge. That's not, that's not the six thirty-five that we pay for every hour, for forty hours, for fifty-two weeks a year. That's just the surcharge, the extra part, to be able to kind of make sure this, you know, say solv, solvency, so we can basically, IAM keeps going. So it's, we're putting a lot of money in this IAM pension, a lot of money, so. I think it's only fair to the ones that don't basically have that advantage to take, you know, or basically don't get that, they work for the city, they get the rest of the benefits. You know, to give, to move them up to six percent, I think that's a, that's definitely fair.
Now, which people does this actually help in, in the city? What, what's one you're talking about?
Hunter, Bryson, Steve, Liz, Richard, Katie.
Katie. Hunter.
And Joy.
More office personnel.
Joy.
Joy.
There's like seven that are eligible, and I think five take advantage of it right now, if I'm not mistaken.
I'm looking right now.
So.
I love this iPad.
So, I guess, any other, any comments, questions? Uh, so.
So if nobody, if nobody has a problem with that six percent, I, those numbers, I have to do, and I, and I can still make a couple changes. That's why we have this work session, just in case there's stuff in there that you just totally don't like, or like Tommy might find a mistake or something like that. There is still like a couple days where I can change this, because then it has to be, the very last page there, it kind of tells you the timeline, and it has to be sent to the paper, we will, and the mayor, you may wanna mention this too, but the first meeting in October, it'll be presented. We have to post it ten days before that.
We have a hearing on the first.
Yeah, so then, and, and then the second meeting of October is the adoption, you know, because all city budgets have to be adopted for November first.
You know, that sucks. I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said that. We're out the twentieth.
You're out. Right? Yeah, you may comment at meeting four last.
Oh, the second meeting in October?
Cause AIM starts at fall anymore?
The twenty-first, yeah.
Well, we'll be here.
Yeah.
We'll be here, but he has to leave for mayor's.
But I guess that's okay.
Tony did it last year.
Tony can handle it.
Tony did it last year. You weren't here last year.
Is that the budget thing?
Yeah, for a second, yeah.
Well, you don't need me.
No, we need you, but.
No, no, I'm serious, I, I'm good, we're good, okay. So, yeah, we'll do the public hearing on the sixth then, and, and then the adoption would be on the twentieth. So, Mark will get the changes made that we, that you guys were made aware of today, and then we'll move forward.
Uh, the only thing that I'd like to add is I agree with Tommy in terms of what he disagrees with. I would like to see that changed as well.
The four percent?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else have a comment about that?
Who all did the four, four percent effect?
Me, Mark, and Judge.
Did you guys get three or four percent raise this, this year in the contract?
They've done, so they've, the last couple years, they've done the same increases as city employees.
Okay, so you didn't get the raise that the city employees got?
That's what they, that's what they're.
That's what he says. That's what you're trying to get now.
Yeah. Eight, four, three, three is what we did on the contract.
I just worry about the precedent that it sets, so it'll, you know, it'll continue.
That's my only thing too.
Well, I, you know, and I'm not speaking for or against, I'm just basically just saying, you know, if, if you take a look at what the cities do in the state of Indiana, you know.
You say that all the time.
I know, I, I'm gonna say it again.
I know what I do too.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
For my pay, okay?
Uh, can I, can I talk?
Go ahead, but I got reference to how much you've gotten since you started.
That's fine.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I'm just, I, you guys, you guys get to vote. I don't get a vote. I, I can say something. But all I'm gonna say is, that basically, the cities in the state of Indiana, I, they do an AIM survey every year, and an AIM survey gets sent out to every one of you. I, I basically let you guys, I email it to you and take you to look at it. And of the cities in the state of Indiana, there's probably ninety-five percent or ninety-six percent of them, basically, those positions basically go along with the same percent, percentages as what the rest of the employees get. You know, and I said this before, that it's, it's not about me, it's about the position. It's about basically keeping that position at a pay. If you go to these clerk treasurer classes, and the mayor could probably speak if he wants to, and I, and trust me, I, I'll take it out. I'll be honest with you, I, I am gonna take it out, because I just, but I just wanna explain this to you. If you go to these clerk treasurer classes, and you see that the people that they have as clerk treasurers, and he could speak for the mayors, that these are very qualified people, and the reason that they are qualified people is because of the rate of pay that they get. You know, so it's one of those things where you kind of have the old saying, you get what you pay for, so when, when that position opens up, it's important to make sure that that rate of pay matches what everybody in the state, or matches what a person with that qualification should have. I, I, I take a look around the state of these places and stuff like that, and that's.
I look at AIM too, and you have a few people in your office, not just you and a clerk, a deputy, you have multiple people.
Tommy, I am taking it out.
That's what I was gonna say, if you look.
I, I'm taking it out.
I knew there'd be ill feelings.
No, there's, no, I, no.
This is our job.
Tommy, I didn't.
How did I vote on the, how did I vote on the?
Tommy, I never, I've never done this for the money, all right? Okay?
We're set the precedent, and I don't.
I just, I just feel like it's important for the position to keep it basically what it should be.
I, I hear what, I hear what you're saying.
I do too, you say it every time. You don't hear us saying, well, let's make ours fifty-five thousand, so we can get people off the street to do a better job at being council.
I, I hear what you're saying, but I also.
I work hard at this.
I know you work hard.
I really work hard at this.
I, I.
Work hard at this. I also see comparables, Greendale, Aurora, and I get their budget isn't the same size as ours, but when you look at population, things that they put on, stuff like that, other cities, our pay is pretty lucrative for some of the elected positions that we have.
Well, I, thank you, guys, but I will say this. I, I don't think you can compare us with Greendale or Aurora. Number one, they're considered part-time mayors. They don't have the same activities we've got going on, not even close. They would admit that too. The only thing I'll say is, and listen, I, I, I understand where you guys are coming from, I get it, we all know what we sign up for. But, you know, we're, we're full-time employees. Full-time employees, I think, deserve raises, even if it's the, you know, what the other full-time employees are getting. That's just my two cents, but I, I, I appreciate everything you guys have always done for me, so we'll leave it at that.
Yeah, I'm, 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 I'm good, I'm good with taking it out. I, I really am.
Again, I just don't wanna.
I just wanna, I just, just wanted to say what I wanted to say, like I said, it's, it's on record, I, I don't have a problem saying it.
No ill will.
No, there's, no, there's not.
None.
Yeah, that's.
Don't worry, but it just.
I appreciate you guys, I don't want no ill feelings.
I don't think it's about.
No, no, trust me, I, I can guarantee you.
It's fine.
I don't know.
I, I take, I take pride in what I do, when I go through things, and I look at this stuff, and I'm like, okay, you got to make your stand. It's more, why did you give me this? You wanted me to go through it?
You have your opinions.
Yes, I respect, I respect that, I truly do.
Okay, are we done? Thank you, everybody, for taking time out, I appreciate it, we'll move, move forward, and we appreciate everything you guys do as well. So, I entertain a motion to adjourn, Tony.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks, guys.
Mayor, do you got a quick second?
Yeah.